Motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any corrections or changes?
Yes, there was supposed to be on the agenda. The money at the transfer station, the $150 on bottles.
Oh, okay. Just go down to next meeting? Are you going to add to the agenda?
I think it should be on the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay, Mary Lee?
Sure.
Okay, any other changes, corrections? Not all of them in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Approve the minutes from 11/13/2023. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second. Corrections?
The only thing-
I'll go the other way, Mary Lee, because you're counting your money.
Please do that.
The only thing that jumped out at me was Allison Harvey was here in person, not on Zoom.
Okay. Joe?
Yes, there's a comma after Nancy before Mark that doesn't need to be there. Second page. The paragraph about the statue of Ethan Allen. About five times the word statute is used when it should be statue. And the name of, the last name of Enes Dooling has an E in it that it doesn't need. Going back to the, going down to the second paragraph from the bottom, third line from the bottom. It's shouldn't have an apostrophe. Next page, third page. Second line, M. Jones stated, Mary Jo Teeter out of town. We should put was in there, out of town. Going down to the Ebis Docs paragraph. The one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line. Says if there is an annual for yearly digitizing, I think we need the word cost after annual. Moving on to the paragraph after. The comments about the departures coming up of treasurer, accountant, et cetera. This next paragraph says, M. Jones stated the accountant position will be vacant. Second line says, one has been chosen and starts November 20. I would say pending passage of criminal background, check and physical. Would make that more clear. The paragraph below that in the second line refers to the commissioner. And I assume that was, Mr. Jones was talking about the REC commission. And on the fourth page in the middle, under manager's report. Second line says, thou cannot get any response from them. I think that should say he cannot get any response from them. And then on the last page. We lack times for the entry into, I'm sorry, the exit from executive session. And the person who made the motion that we leave it. And the same is true for our adjournment. It doesn't identify when that happened or who made the motion. Or who seconded.
I made the motion for the adjournment. I don't know who seconded.
I think we all were rushing to second it, as I recall.
I think Bob did.
You agree with that, Bob?
That's fine. If I remember, I was standing right there.
Is that it, Joe?
It is, thank you.
Bob?
The first page under the paragraph, it starts with a response to request. Fourth line down, it says, R. Spalding asked how it would. I think it needs to be a B in there, be certain that it would remain in the building.
Yeah.
And then the last page, again, I was speaking. R. Spalding wants to know what the revenue, revenues are year-to-date for the next meeting to further discuss. I think it needs to have the recreation department put in there someplace.
Okay, Mary Lee?
I just got one question which I'm not sure about. Was it World War I or was it the Civil War that that plaque is?
World War I.
That is right.
Actually, it was both.
It was both.
It was both.
I actually had that on there and then I missed it. It should be the Civil War and World War I.
Okay. Joe got that one. Joe got that one. And that one, that's all.
What's that? All those in favor of accepting the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there a question? Did you want to put a time? Did you want to put a time for exiting executive session in adjournment?
I don't remember the time, do you guys?
Anybody remember the time?
I don't.
I think it was around 10:00 after 9:00, wasn't it?
It was after 8:40, and I can tell you that much, Dick.
I think it was around 10:00 after 9:00, but I don't know that for sure.
That's, let's go with that.
Go with 9:10, Allison.
And do we know who seconded the motion to exit executive session?
I know I didn't.
Agreed, I didn't either.
Are you sure?
Sure.
I'll take the, I'll take the-
Just take the blame?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Who made the motion, because you didn't say that either?
I think that was Mary Lee.
Mary Lee made the motion and Bob seconded.
I'm pretty confident that's correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
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 I abstain because I wasn't here for the meeting. Next one, citizens' comments or concerns, items not on the agenda. Do we have anything not on the agenda? Yes, Mary, Mary McIntyre?
Mary McIntyre. I just wanted you to be aware that Friends of the REC Boosters Club is in the process of being formed. We're having a formal meeting on the 7th. And I just wanted to give you an idea of what it is. It's very similar. It's based off Friends of the Library and the Frehavon High School's Boosters Club. And the whole thought of it is, is to be in support of recreation. Whether we keep the building, don't keep the building. Our REC commissioners and volunteers are often very busy trying to coach and organize teams. But sometimes there's shortfalls between the town budget of equipment because it's not foreseen necessarily what comes up, what's needed, what the influx of kids are, damage to fields. So those are things that we think that a boosters club can be helpful with in working with and filling some gaps for the director, whoever the director is going to be. That's a full-time, you know, that's a busy job and requires a lot. We saw that with our last REC director. There was, you know, some help that that person could have used. And we have a lot of resources, but a lot of times those resources aren't people who want to coach. They're over their coaching days or they were never interested in coaching. But they still have a lot of talent and they have some time. And so I, there's several of us, think that this would be a nice bridge for our community and to help recreation and not just kids recreation, all kinds of recreation. You know, build off our, our bike paths. Our portion of the bike path. Use some of the college things, just, and for seniors and, and preschoolers and, and of course, school age kids as well. So just wanted to let you know about it and, and that-
Any questions for Mary? Saying no?
Thank you.
Oh, Mike?
Well, it's, it's not exactly related, but I do want to publicly thank you, Mary and Martha for, if they don't know, that they've been down at the village school checking every day to make sure that the heat's been staying on and there's no pipe burst and reporting back if they find something wrong. So it's been a really breath of fresh air to have those two individuals on our side to check it out while we don't have somebody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for that, Mary.
Well, it's, it's for, for my husband and I, it's been a one hand washing another because we've been helping a lot of people play a lot of pickleball. We've been in there with like 20 people at a time playing pickleball. So we check the building out when we open things up. We check the building out when we close it up. And then unfortunately, poor Mike, if there are things, I, I don't bother him via telephone, but I text it to him and we go back and forth with it. But if people are going to check the building and not report anything, then it's probably shouldn't even bother to check the building. So don't always find things, some are little and some are positive and some are not positive. But it is what it is. So we're more than happy to help. I think we have a lot of people in town who are willing to help. We just have to figure out how to harness that energy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
He's in the, on the audience, he has her hand raised.
Mary, Mary Drozi?
Hi, good evening, thank you, as always. I'm just curious if there are any updates on the hiring of the director, REC director? And the, the conversations about the sale of the building, if there's anything that you can share to the public? Thank you.
Mike, do you have anything to respond to that?
Yeah, I do. Hi, Mary. So the, I have made a conditional offer to an individual for the REC director position. And I had a conversation with Martha, basically an email. And it, we, we kind of diverged, I guess, a little bit on, on the person, but a conditional offer was made, hasn't been accepted at this point. They're out of town. And as far as the building itself goes, that's something I'll defer back to the chairman.
Okay, anything else? That take care of an answer for you, Mary?
Yes, I assume there's nothing about the building you can share then, if that's what that means.
There's been no developments.
Yeah, I don't have anything personally.
She's asking about any developments on the sale of the building, there haven't been any developments.
No, I don't believe there have been, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next item, co-funding of rewards for information resulting in the conviction of rail trail killer. Mark Brown?
Thanks, everybody. Just to be transparent, you all know why I'm here. I've contacted each of you individually last week, not to influence anybody, but just so you could have time to think about it. I contacted the chief as well. For the minutes, I think everybody's aware that in early October, someone brutally murdered one of our fellow Castleton residents on the rail trail. At the same time, I think they committed a second crime and they stole the safety and security from every resident of this town that we have all come to know and love. And maybe the reason that we live in a small town is for that safety and security. We're about almost two months after the crime and it appears there are no leads at this time. I've spoken with the state police investigator and I think the chief would corroborate that, that they have no leads. And I think that as a Castleton resident, wanting to do everything I can to make sure that the person that committed this crime is brought to the criminal justice system. My company, my employer actually, is going to offer a $5,000 reward to, for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person that has committed this crime. And I'm here tonight to ask the select board to match that. I think that it would be a good investment for the town of Castleton and money well spent for, for three reasons. I didn't know Mrs. Fleming, but she is, was a fellow resident, just like all of you are, of this town. This is a closed town and I think that we look out for each other. We should look out for each other. I think, again, when I spoke with Mrs. Harris last week, she shared that this is the first time in her life that she's locked the doors of her home and her car. And I think that's a common sentiment with people all through this community. And, and we need to fix that. You know, people should not have to live in fear. You know, these are, I don't want to sound chauvinistic, but, you know, our wives are, the women in our lives. And as American men, we need to do a better job of taking care of them. And I think it's also a good opportunity for the town of Castleton to send warning out there to would-be criminals that if you commit a crime in this town, it's not just the police department you're going to face, but the citizens of Castleton are not going to stand for crime in this community and we'll get together and we'll figure it out. I've talked with the state police investigator and told him that this was something I'd like to do, they didn't see any problem with it. I've done a little bit of research on rewards offered. They're not always successful, about 60% of the time they are. I believe that more than one person knows what happened. And they're obviously not people of high character. And people of low character will sell each other out for money. Will they do it for 500? No. Will they do it for 5,000? Maybe. Will they do it for 10? Better chance of that. You know, my, in, in a perfect world, I'd like to see some other businesses in the community step forth. If this reward was $25,000, would the crime get solved? I don't know that for sure. I believe there's a really, really good chance it would. Is it worth 25,000? It's worth everything. You know, we've lost security in this community. I guess I've said everything I want to say.
I have a question.
Question, yep.
This is either a question for either you, Mark, or for the chief. Is it reasonable to expect a conviction after July 1 of 2024? Or let me rephrase that, it wouldn't be unreasonable to expect a conviction prior to that.
Well, I would-
Would that be a safe statement?
It would be unreasonable to think it would happen.
That's what I'm thinking, okay. That's the only question I got.
Questions from other board members? Joe?
I, no, but I, I would appreciate it if, if Mr. Combs would explain his thinking.
Well, my thinking is that I am prepared to make a motion that this board put on the next town meeting's ballot, an article, asking the voters to match Brown's auto salvage $5,000 with a $5,000 commitment from the town. Because that's not budgeted. And I feel that we should ask the voters for permission to do that and I would be really surprised if they didn't approve it. So I will make that motion.
Okay.
I, I'll second that for discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah.
So the, under this scenario, the town wouldn't be participating until after the budget of next year?
Correct. The money, the funds wouldn't be available until after July 1.
Would the, so there wouldn't be a commitment either?
Not until after the vote.
I understand the situation you're in, but, you know, this is a pretty dire situation. And I think that the longer we wait, the, the chance of catching this person becomes reduced. And, and I, I understand that you have budgetary constraints. I, I get all that, but, you know, this is a situation that has never occurred in this town, not in the time I've lived here. You know, I've lived here for 45 years, 47 years, and, and we've never seen anything like this. And I, I, I think this is really urgent. I think that we need to figure out who did this and we need to send a message that this town's not going to be soft on crime.
Okay, we, we had a, a motion, is there a second?
I did, I seconded already.
I'm second, I'm sorry, Bob. Okay, go ahead.
Where, my question is, where would the funds come from if we were to commit them right now?
The piggy bank.
Okay, I want to see that piggy bank first.
He has the piggy bank.
Where would the money, the question is, Mark, where would the money come from? If it's, the commitment is made prior to town meeting day?
Personally, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it's fair to ask-
Pardon?
I don't think it's fair to ask Mark that question.
No, I have a couple ideas.
I think it's fair.
I have a couple ideas. Probably gonna not make the chief happy, but I'd like to see some of it come from his budget. If, how much has the police department spent on this case already?
For hours?
A lot, with no results. This is five, I don't mean that in a critical way.
No, 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 I understand, Mark.
This is 5,000 that you only pay if you get the results. You could hire an investigator to help solve this and spend 100,000 in the next year, maybe get results, maybe not.
Well, to be fair, Mark, this was the, after we talked on the phone last week, this was the idea I came up with and that's why I threw it out there. If somebody has a better idea, believe me, I'm not married to this.
I just asked a question.
I've got my hand up for some time here.
I got it, Joe, go ahead.
Well, I, 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 I understand Mark's point that deferring this decision until March is less than optimal. And at the same time, if I understand correctly, this select board can't bind a future select board to this commitment. But we could bind our own board to this commitment until the end of the fiscal year. So I, I, I like Mr. Combs' suggestion. I, I think, given the potential for a multi-year investigation and prosecution, we need to ask for the town's support to contribute to the, the reward regardless of the fiscal year in which it gets paid out. So I, I would both want us to support this, and I don't, can't answer the question of where it would come from. But in our, a budget of our size, we usually have money at the end of the year that we can reassign for this purpose. Plus, it's highly unlikely that it will, that the reward will be spent this fiscal year. So I, I think putting the name of the, and the credibility of the select board behind Mark's proposal now is advisable. And asking the town voters for continuing support for this reward is also advisable. So I, I would like to, well, I, I see Mary Lee has her hand up.
Y'all set, Joe?
Well, I was just going to conclude by saying I, I would like to suggest that, that Mr. Combs perhaps amend his motion to add that we support this presently for an award that might be paid out during this fiscal year, but also put it on the town meeting ballot for town meeting day. So that there is ongoing support from the town to pay this if, as it will probably be likely, the reward gets paid in a different fiscal year.
Which one's first, Mary Lee?
I want to agree with Joe completely. Like Mark said when he was talking to me, I've never locked a door in my whole life. I was never brought up with locked doors. And the fact that the chief called me and threatened me, him, him and him, to lock my damn doors. It's, it's just going to give people a little bit of security.
So I, can I speak?
Yes, you were going to be called on anyway.
So the reason that Mr. Combs mentioned about after July 1 is because nobody's going to get a reward, reward unless there's a conviction. A conviction can take six months, can take two years, can take. So whether you all agreed to that and just go forward with it and put it out, no one's going to be collecting any money anytime soon. That's not how things work. Rewards are, there has to be a conviction if you put that in the piece. And that can take a while. So even if you all voted on it, it's not going to happen before July.
But Mark wants to be able to say there's a $10,000 reward.
Right now.
11, I have $1,000 anonymous, so this would make it 11.
So you could say there's a minimum of 11, because it's Mike Brown.
A minimum of 11, I'm hoping to get more. I, I've knocked on a lot of doors. I won't get into that. Disappointed with a few people, but.
There's always some of that, Mark.
Sadly.
Mr. Mark, I'm going to withdraw my, or rescind my motion. I'm going to see if you want to take a stab at the motion. But you can be more eloquent than I can sometimes.
Nice move, Dick.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I would move that the select board approve a $5,000 contribution to the reward that Mark Brown has proposed. And put an ongoing, put an item on the ballot for town meeting day requesting that the voters express continuing support for that $5,000 contribution to the reward if the reward is not paid out before July 1, 2003. Sorry, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second, any other discussion? I'm all set. Y'all set? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So two questions I have. Would information be directed towards the state police or to your number?
I think, I think that's something that once, I think we draft something, so I want, I want all parties involved. So we put down, I think, both.
Okay.
They're real busy with stuff. People come to me anyway about different things, so. Some people will be more comfortable coming here, some may just call the tip line.
And then I would like you to be the final voice, whether or not a tip was worthy of that reward.
Sure, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you, I really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for the effort.
Moving on, Lions Club requests for Crystal Beach Annual Ice Fishing Derby. 217, 218, 2024. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we allow the use of Crystal Beach for the Lions Club Fishing Derby, February 17th and 18th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? Is there serious opposition to this?
None at all.
If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes, moving on. Police chief, your update.
All right, everybody got a copy of the October monthly report?
Yes.
Calls of service, we think we have by 11, 551 in the month. If you look at them. No, anything doesn't stand out too much. You can see we're somewhat increment, increments like suspicious person or circumstances. Those were pretty much all related to the homicide, most of those. People calling about suspicious people during that two-week period they were here. Any questions on the service calls?
Whole lot more foot patrols than there was last month, is that?
Uh, school, the university.
Okay.
And as you'll see that in our, our support for that, a lot of times they do, they put the foot patrols on Main Street and obviously Mechanic Street and such. Criminal arrests, we had 11 in October. As you can kind of go through there, we had a couple burglaries, obviously there was the homicide. We had aggravated assault, burglaries were residential. And not your typical burglary, a burglar is anytime somebody breaks into an occupied dwelling. That, it doesn't have to think that they have to steal something, it could be to get somebody or start a fight or anything like that. And that's what those two were.
Has to be an occupied building though.
Correct.
Breaking into a garage or stealing a snow blower.
No, 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 we're talking residential, residential burglary. No, if they go into a garage, that's a burglary where they actually take property, but in a residential, you don't have to take property.
Okay.
Any questions on the arrests? Traffic violations, you'll see a big drop in October. First two weeks, we really focused on tips and really assisting in the, the whole investigation piece. So we really weren't on the road a whole lot during that, that two-week period. But we're still able to make almost 100. Any questions on that? Calls of service, that's where you get those, we've increased the foot patrols there, you can see that. Traffic stops are related to calls that came from the university that people were leaving the campus and they were had some driving erratic operation. Usually when university's in session, we have more obviously service calls related- Usually when university's in session, we have more, obviously, service calls related to them. The backup, it's pretty consistent. You can see where most of them go, seven to Fairhaven, one to Hubbardon to support VSP. I've had two requests. Mike knows about one of them. I had Benson resident request, police services, Hubbardon Police Services, to come up with a contract of some sort. I didn't do that because I really don't believe that we have the, the personnel and the equipment really do that properly. I told, like, like I told any of them, 10 hours a week is not worth it. You want us to do 20 hours, that's different, but it's gonna cost. But I didn't give them anything. I wouldn't do anything without the board's permission, but it's just something to let you know that people have approached us. Because they're seeing, you know, everyone's seen an increase in a lot of activities in the county. And they wanna feel safe. If you look at the notes, obviously, we talked about the homicide investigation, that's still going on, obviously, there's no leads. It's kinda, it's kinda, I don't wanna say it's cold, but it's really, hasn't, hasn't gained any ground. It's frustrating. I'm in contact with them every week, you know, and there's not a lot that... The longer this takes, the less you're gonna find evidence. So now, you're putting a reward out, we're looking for testimony. We're looking for actual people that were either part of it, saw some more of it, versus trying to find physical evidence. Because physical evidence deteriorates over time. And we talked about the burglaries, we talked about property checks, still continue to do those. We talked about the traffic stops. We did remove all the speed displays, the speed carts. And we just did recently a, a safety day at the elementary school in Castleton, where they had all EMS services up there, which has always been a blast. We each had stations. Did the trunk of tree here, also were out there. Halloween was pretty uneventful for criminal behavior, so that's a plus, considering what it used to be when I was a child. Totally, it's totally gotten really civil. We participated in National Drug Takeback Day when, October 21st, on a Saturday, a lot of people, which they do anyway, they bring in all their prescription meds they wanna get rid of. We loaded up three boxes. So we're talking 50, 60 pounds per box. And then we end up taking them over in the afternoon to the Army National Guard, who then is waiting at the Sheriff's Department in Rutland, and then they just load all the counties, the participating departments, and they take them up north. So that's been a blessing, that drop, that drop box. I don't know if you, if you've ever seen it.
Where's it located?
Seen it, Mary Lee?
No, I just brought mine to you.
Oh, that's right, I took them for you. That's right. We also did a, the National Strides Against Breast Cancer, I had Katrina Officer Ducharme help with that, it was on a Sunday. And we also did some assistance with the high school when they, one of their, their law enforcement class, we took them out on some radar, kinda demonstrated that with them on, on 31st. And then obviously, TSA fingerprint service is going well. We're doing it from 7:00 to 5:00, not 8:00 to 4:00. We're doing anywhere from 45 to 60 people on Wednesday. And people are really, I've had a lot of people locally, the whole area, get their pre-checks. It's been a blessing. Any questions on any of this, on my report?
Joe?
Chief, I just wanted to ask you about your first note, and what, what is our response when we have officers involved in a homicide or an accident with death resulting?
So, everything but a homicide, I investigate. So, with the fatality, which I didn't mention, we had that fatality down on, on a Saturday, because that person expired in New York, we did not have to do it. But it's something that we would cover. And anytime we have fatality, we get ahold of the reconstruction team from the state police, they have drones, and then they map out everything for us. And we put it, and we use that to give us the information, we put it in our report.
I guess I'm thinking more about the, perhaps, Employee Assistance Program initiative.
Oh, you mean for mental health?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we, we're well aware of it. We've, I always ask the officers that went to the scene. We don't make it mandatory. I think, since I've been here and I've done countless of them, I think we've actually done two. And we've done joint ones with the fire department. We've also done some individuals where I've sent them to an EEP-sponsored counselor if they're having issues.
Yeah, obviously, I, I did not see the murder scene, and don't know what it was like for those of you who did. But I think that there are certain situations in which I would hope we would strongly encourage.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you know, anybody that's, whether you've been in combat, or whether you've seen a lot of flesh, say that much. You, you kinda get hardened over time, but you have to be able to recognize the officers that are getting involved, whether they start breaking down, whether they can't control their emotions, and that's something that I've, I've made mandatory for a couple of my officers.
Good.
So, I'm pretty well aware of it.
Thank you.
But, yes.
The fire department does the same, Joe. Especially on the, that accident out here, I called them, Heath was already all over.
We talk about it, even amongst ourselves. It's something that you always have to, and you, you don't know how it affects somebody till after the fact, until you've cleared the scene, and you're back, and you're talking about it, and you're looking over the pictures, and you're getting, after you've got your initial interviews and stuff like that, that's when things start hitting you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just had one, real quick. And any reports of fuel thefts around the area?
No.
No? Very surprised, because Fairhaven's been hit hard, very hard.
You mean like from?
Stealing gas out of vehicles, diesel fuel out of trucks?
No.
Wow.
Keep that in Fairhaven.
Yeah, must be there on foot.
Anything else for the chief on this?
They don't have any guests.
Mike?
Just on the accident at the Corners, it's weird to suddenly had again the question about first response. And I think you're, you might get a visit from the fire department, or somebody will, will pay a visit to the select board about the lack of, the time it took for somebody to show up, first responders. And the fire department was there and did some stuff that they're not trained to do. It was very large individual tourniquets, and there's some grumbling saying that it took a long time for first response to get there. Whether our first response or regional ambulance.
Yeah, I saw the body cam from one of the troopers, because actually, state police was first to be, Joe or Duke, I happened to be right in town. Our officer was actually dealing with an accident with a drunk operator here, PD. So that left calling myself and, and calling Justin in. But I remember looking at it, and it did seem like it was long, but I'd have to get the timestamp and see how long it actually took them.
Over 20 minutes.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what their call, you know, what everything was, what was going on, other than...
Anything else for the chief?
I did, just one thing on the food bank. You guys, didn't you, I know it's not in your report, but...
Yeah, that'd be in the November report. We just did that, yeah, we just did that, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, chief, better stay here, stay there. Next item is the noise ordinance. Chief?
Uh, yeah. Did I give you the, the newest one I did?
Hand some out there on the table.
Yeah, we passed them on.
No, I don't think you got the, the one, the, the most recent one.
Can you bring some in?
Yeah, but I don't know if I put one on where he was sitting.
I didn't have anything in front of me.
I believe you did.
Yeah, it's black and white.
No.
This is it right here.
Okay.
There was an error right there that Joe Marks had sent in to me.
So, this is the, one of the, obviously a final draft, it's not the final, but, you know, thinking of a timeline when you, when the board decides to warn it, or however you wanna do it. So the two things that we changed, we added a sentence under Section 4A. We talked about it in the last meeting. Joe Marks sent it to me, I put it in. And then on the allot line, which is on Section 3D. And that were the only changes that I So the only thing is, well, I know, I don't know if everybody had read it, was it was a couple things, the process, once we finalize, or the board finalizes this ordinance, is what I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna do a demonstration. And I already got Justin looking up for a meter to read the decibels, mid-range, you know, something that's decent, and the A, A chord. Is I'm gonna do a demonstration for the board to understand how it works. And then I'm gonna do a demonstration, because really this all stemmed from the Creek Road business. And one thing I did not wanna do, I didn't wanna single out one business and make it try to fit the ordinance to them. With, because it, to me, it's bias. I, I shouldn't single out particular business for something like that. It's gotta apply to everybody. And I think that's covered in here, if you don't think it is. But that's something I'm, that I'm gonna do once everything gets decided on. I don't know if there's anything else that somebody wanted to add, or anything you wanted to discuss on this at all?
I guess my question, chief, is you're not proposing that we defer consideration of adopting this provision of the policy until we've attended your demonstration?
No, 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 not at all. No, I just wanna make sure the board, because once this enacts, it's, you're gonna see, you're gonna see more complaints. And I wanna explain to you how we're gonna do it. So if they come to you, just like they come to me, it's no different with anything else. But this, I think this because we've, we've had the 70 decibel rating in that piece, and I lowered the time to 10. Doesn't seem like a lot, but that's a lot, that's a lot. I can, it gives us, I didn't wanna make it so specific where my officers gotta have some discretion. And I think that sentence that we added was what gave them that discretion. Because we're really focusing the 70 after 10:00 PM. I wonder if there's something before 10:00 that's loud and unreasonable. That's something that I would defer to the 70s as a standard. Do you understand what I just said?
I think so.
Yep. It just gives, it, to me, having that tool just gives me, or my officers, a better standard to go by, rather than, just like we talked about, what's reasonable, each of us have different reasonable noise levels. What we think is too loud, what's not too loud. I want it to be fair.
Well, we all agree that the real issue with the, with the ordinance as it is now is there was no place to draw a line.
Correct.
So that, this does that.
Yeah.
But I'm prepared to support it. The only thing I had with this version has been addressed to this version, so I'm prepared to proceed if anyone else is.
Why did you not have this one that was in our packets?
I had the one that was in our packet. The newer version was on the table and it...
Yeah, I handed, I put those on the table that were separate. Because it was, there was...
It was a typo.
Content is the same, there was just...
A typo.
An extra numbered line that was blank.
So I know, I know Joe's been working with me on it, so if there's anybody else has any input on it, and I don't know what your timeframe is, or how you're gonna get this to the point where you're gonna pass it, but I'd like to have any kind of revisions or changes done, you know, given us like, whether it be two months or whatever.
I think we've been talking about this at public meetings for quite a few months now.
At least three.
Yeah, and I'm prepared to move that we adopt this as modified by the chief, recognizing that we will need to have a publicity process and an opportunity for citizens to file a petition to stop the adoption of the policy, if they want.
I'll second that.
And a second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
So just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, the process is that we should, I guess I'm not from, totally up to speed on what the process is. So, do we sign this and date it now and then put it out to the public, or do we do that first?
I, I think that the chief should resubmit this without the underlined and bolded text.
Okay.
And after we receive that, I think we should sign it. And, you know, if you look at the last page...
Don't go away yet, chief.
Don't go away, chief.
Uh, that lists the next steps. That lists the, the need to, this can't be adopted, put in, into effect for 60 days, requires that it be posted in public places, that it be, there be a notice of the adoption of this policy in the newspapers we list as our newspapers of record, with a deadline for allowing people to appeal this under 24 VSA, Section 1973.
So when it says on the adoption history, item two, read and approved at a regular select board meeting, do we have to verbally read this out loud?
That's an interesting question. I suppose we should.
So why don't we agree to do that at the next select board meeting, and the chief can provide us with a final copy?
With a clean copy, sure.
With all the underlines and bold type taken out.
Okay.
But it should be, this document with just that changed.
Okay.
And then in the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll read it and approve it. And then the clock starts.
Now, is it my understanding that we approve it, but then it's warned so that the public can say, no, no?
Yes.
Right.
Oh, that's fair.
Which has gotta be 60 days, I think he was talking about.
That's what it said in here, so I assume that statute is what that's going by.
So with that in mind, do you wish to withdraw your motion?
I wish to withdraw my motion.
And withdraw the second?
Yes.
So be it. Thank you, chief.
All right, so do you want, do you want it ready? Because I'm usually only here in the second meeting of the month. Do you want it ready for the first in December?
You don't need to be here, chief.
No, I know that, but I'm talking about the copy, the new copy.
If we can do it at the next select board meeting, we will. And you don't need to be here. We just need to have the final document.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you're right. That's what I'm saying. Since I'm not, we'll be here the first, I'll have it ready, cleaned up, so you guys can read it and...
Right. Sounds good.
And the cleanup, I would say, may not need that adoption history section.
Okay. I'm not sure. I don't even know, that's something that...
Why don't you and the manager confer on that?
If you can come meet with me, I'll be there tomorrow.
All right.
Thanks again, chief.
Thank you.
Moving on. Tree bid award for 445 Main Street. Topple tree, and, tree in front of post office, cut down 24-inch basswood tree. Seems to be there's only one bid on it. Is there a motion?
I have a question, I'm not sure what...
What tree it is?
Uh-huh. Is it leaning, or is it dangerous?
I looked at it today.
Which one?
The one that we're talking about.
There's three on here.
Well, there's, there's one that's in the agenda. 24-inch basswood tree. There's a second 80-inch cottonwood tree, which is much more expensive, and I assume we're not, you're not recommending that we approve that.
No, he was looking to get those approved. That's, both those trees approved, according to the last conversation I had for hunting.
Okay.
Mike, what's the problem with these trees?
The poples is the one that's dead and dying, it's huge. And then the one in front of the post office, it's starting to get split and it's pushing up the pavers and it's getting underneath the sidewalk and, and so he, what Scott Welch wants to do is get it taken out of there and then at some point during this streetscape and everything else for the sidewalk, that we replant some trees down there anyway.
Okay. So where is 445 Main Street?
Down by, across in the green. And it was a question of that tree, when you measured from the center of the road to see where the right of way was, the tree falls on the edge of the right of way. And it was something that Scott's been dealing with, the homeowner, landowner with for a while, and he finally agreed, we're splitting some hairs on it, but he said it's dying and big pieces come falling off it and it's right near the sidewalk and so...
So is the resident in favor of getting rid of the tree?
Yes. The resident's been the one that's been bugging him for like almost three years.
On three, go three in a row.
Do we have the money to pay for these removals?
He does, he has it in his budget.
Make a motion, we authorize the town manager to contract with Trees Incorporated to cut these two trees on Main Street for a total of $6,350.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Petition to install lighting at the intersection of Route 30 and West Crystal Haven.
Is that across from Crystal Beach? Where's...
Right next to Crystal Beach.
Just past it.
Just north.
Oh, it's on the same side?
First road north of Crystal Beach, yes.
Okay.
Did I see in an email today that it was gonna cost 150 bucks to do that?
150 bucks is the annual cost, there's already a pole there, so it would be 156 dollars annual cost for it. And tonight, when Pete was in here earlier, he's gonna have one of his officers go up there and look at it, but there's probably no other really solution. We talked about putting a reflective tape around the post of the sign, stop sign right there, and there's already reflected material on it and the complaints are it's not, it's not really doing anything for them. So I was approached by the individual and I did a song and dance with him and basically they came back with a petition to have it done.
Is this a, is this a safety factor?
Yeah, it's like when Mr. Mark made that comment about pulling into the fire station right here off of Route 30, you can't see that dark area, that's the same complaint that they're making there. And when I drove in there tonight, I just paid attention to that light and I'm like, yeah, it does light up that intersection there. So that's what the complaint was. There's, the lady that made the complaint said she drove off the road and where those, the houses, there's a bunch of chickens out there and she goes, I'm gonna drive in their chicken coop. And you can't see that intersection.
There is precedent for this, too.
Was still, we put it in.
Yeah, we've done this in several places.
Yeah.
But for 150 dollars, does the city need to be in front of the board? Isn't that something you can just do under your own authority?
It was a petition to the select boards, I think the appropriate was to bring it here to you. If you say, we're good, Mike, just get it done, then I'd go get it done. Because I think I forwarded the email to the board members today from Erica from Green Mountain Power.
Right.
Said it was, what it was in cost.
Mike, I'm good with it, go get it done. That's me saying that.
My opinion is if you and the police chief see a need, do it. Do you agree with that?
If the police chief agrees to it?
Sure. Okay. So you don't need any action from us?
No, just at least the petitioner will know on the petition that it was addressed by the select board.
On the minutes, we'll show that we agree if there's a safety need to get it done.
Any other questions on this? Nope, if not, we'll move on. Managers report?
I don't have one.
Neither do I. Neither do I. I don't want a manager's report either.
No, I didn't do one.
That's why I don't have one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was on...
It's all right.
Okay, moving on to purchasers for approval, I don't believe we have any.
No.
So we'd move on to warrants for approval. We have eight of them.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 1116 for $34,673.31. Warrant 1122 for $6,025.23. Warrant 1127 for $50,849.97. Warrant 1116P for $17,730.75. Warrant 1122P for $16,317.48. And warrant 1128 for $6,000 and no cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Think we have a couple of this...
I would move that we approve warrant number 1117P for $641.32. And warrant number 1123P for $641.32.
Is there a second? And a second. Any discussion on this?
I recuse myself.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. There you go, Robert.
Oh.
You're doing very well, Jim, you're right on time.
Well, we have a handicapped person here tonight and we're trying to help him out.
I think he went today, Mike. Is it okay or is it swelling up? Today it's swollen up like a big old sausage. I'm keeping it up now, but it's still swollen, look at that.
When did you actually have it done?
I don't spend enough time looking at your ankles to know how they compare. What did he have done? I don't even know what he's had done.
I think he had his knee done.
Oh, yeah?
Your knee?
Yeah.
You're not going out dancing tonight?
That'd be a big old no. But I did, while you're signing, I just want to remind you that there's a budget meeting tomorrow night and Bob said he'd bring me a birthday cake.
That's right.
All the way from Connecticut, right?
You're not coming tomorrow night?
I will be calling in.
What's the trip to Connecticut, Bob?
Castleton Women's Hockey. Going to Wesland.
Where are they gonna be playing?
Wesland.
Where's Wesland?
Middletown, Connecticut.
I know where that is.
Yep.
Now, that's gonna be over, over there?
It's here.
Is here?
The planning commission got moved over there.
Oh, okay. And at 6 o'clock?
Correct.
So take my call when I call in, please. It hasn't worked real well the last two or three meetings.
Do you want me to buy the cake for him and you're gonna...
No, I missed the planning commission meeting, there was a couple others that I missed, yeah. No, 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 you can't. I don't think it was your doings. What did you say? What did you say?
You want me to buy his cake and you reimburse me? After all, you promised.
I promised him a birthday?
You promised him a birthday cake, look at us.
The hell was I on drugs that night?
Must be.
I don't remember that.
You did.
I did.
I'm gonna see.
That'd be in the minutes.
You did.
Oh, boy. I might get to open my mouth, right?
Anybody wake up this morning and said they ditched a pop early on the road and said, what the hell? It's pretty slick this morning. I didn't, I wasn't out there driving around. I watched my wife take spin out of the driveway and go around the corner, the rear end sliding out.
Is that unusual?
My steps were a little icy.
Well, I normally walk, so it's probably not.
Wasn't supposed to be that way.
I know.
They said rain in the valleys.
I know.
They got a foot of snow from there.
I know they did, I saw it.
Yeah.
Three o'clock in the morning, the cars were on the highway, just, oh, one car, I saw it, just like barely moving.
Oh, boy.
Well, I went to bed and it was pouring. Got up and there was snow all over.
Snow on the ground, yeah. Just how things can change.
And it was slippery because it was wet snow.
Yeah. Flushy.
Hey, do you have eight? I believe we do. Brief recap. Items for follow-up, do we have any?
Well, I think that the policy on cans and bottles, we need to take a look at that when we discuss that next time.
Okay, anything else?
Select board concerns?
Rec revenue, can you just get that for me?
Yeah, that's, that one might be a little difficult. I have to talk to, I think I'm gonna talk to, because nobody's, Bo's not doing it right now, so...
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna have to ask Christine and see if she can pull it together.
Maybe just the last time they did it or whatever, just, I just want to see where they're at.
Anything else for recap? If not, is there...
Well, do we do select board comments, Sue?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not that I want to add anything in, but...
I jumped down. Select board comments and/or concerns?
I wanted to ask, Mike, whether you have a version of the budget spreadsheet that has that last column of comments?
That was one of my questions, too. I'd like to have the notes down through there.
So this is the same as this except that it's got the additional column?
It's, this is, I brought it with you because I was gonna ask a question during your, it's like word comments.
Okay.
I made a comment to you guys that, not to you guys, I'm sorry, to the board that I was waiting on some information, Melanie was looking up some actuals on utilities and I was waiting on the PD stuff. So I brought a copy that I was able to put together today with all the updated stuff minus the CPI numbers for November, but if you wouldn't mind, I was gonna pass it around and you got an updated copy and has the comments on it. There should be a date on the upper, it read on the upper left, it says updated 11/27.
Yep.
So basically, we can chuck the other one?
Yeah, you can chuck it.
And use this one?
Now that I got my notes on the other one.
So, I guess I can share this with you tomorrow. You'll be in the office tomorrow. I have a couple of questions, I think there are a couple of bad formulas possibly?
Yeah, I found some today that, when we went through the formulas, there's so many formulas in this thing, that I found today that we corrected, so anybody can find something that's odd, it seems like a lot of whack, I'll certainly look at the formula.
That's it for me, thank you.
And the library was the other one, so I'm meeting with the library tomorrow morning, so the numbers that are in there for the library could change by tomorrow night, but I'll correct it tomorrow and give you an updated copy of this.
Is it apt to change a lot?
I don't know at this point. I talked to Nancy Mark and they want, she wanted to come in and talk to me and said it will change, but I don't know if it's gonna change a lot. My gut feeling is no, but I don't know.
Anything else? Comments, concerns?
Just a question to Mike, are we back to disposing of our waste at the landfill? Ganserit landfill and the burner?
Are we, I'm sorry.
Are we back to disposing of our transfer station waste at the burner and the Ganserit landfill? Are we still taking it to Rutland?
We're taking some MSW to Rutland and most of it's been a personnel issue. And if you want, we can talk to you more about that in executive session, but, yeah, so Jim's been hauling for us and it's all timing when he's available.
Okay.
So there is some stuff that's been going to Rutland. MSW is going to New York, but demo and stuff, some has been going to Rutland.
Okay. Anything else?
Not on that, but I got a question. What's the log truck, which it says fire department, but it looks like a log truck?
It's a fire truck, what the hell is that?
It looks like a log truck.
When's the last time you did any logging?
Not that long ago, honey.
I think somebody just left that there. No, there were just two copies that were sitting there.
Yeah, it must have been something the fire department.
Oh.
Oh, it's not for us, then give that back to me. We're not even supposed to be looking at that.
Okay.
I thought it was the new rescue truck, which I think it is.
It's probably the mini bumper that they didn't work.
Oh, probably, yeah.
Anything else on this, comments, concerns?
Sorry, sorry, Dan.
Need an executive session, I believe?
Yes.
For real estate?
Right.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we go into executive session for real estate at 8:09.
With the manager?
With the manager and the board.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.